You scored that.
It wasn't me.
Oh, for once it wasn't you. Nothing that little venison jerky wouldn't take care of. Oh. It's his idea.
No.
Oh, don't believe him.
Nine o'clock, we'll call the county board meeting, we'll give them a flag pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Benoit.
Here.
Commissioner Heinen.
Present.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Approve or amend the agenda?
I miss you, I have these changes for you. After the consent, if we could add these items. Willie Swanson, our new DOC District Supervisor, would like to introduce himself to you all. So right after consent, let's make that the first item. The second is Chris Berg would like to pull his consent item number five for discussion. So let's make that the second item after consent. And then Christine Sherburne out of Treasury would like to give you a brief update on DMV. That would be your third item after consent. And then lastly, Mr. Chair, under County Administrator, let's make that the fourth item under County Administrator. We, if we could please, discuss a county engineer recruitment plan as the fourth item under Administrator.
So do we want to discuss number five?
Yeah, so right after consent, again, you'd have Willie would be number one, and then AT update number two, and then Chris's item as, maybe I said that backwards. Willie first, and then Chris's consent item number five, and then the AT update is number three, after consent. Excuse me.
So we're just pulling it completely?
Sound good?
We'll pull it completely.
Are we good?
Mr. Chair, before you move on, are we going to delete, are you going to talk about it? So the comp-
Number five.
No. No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Public hearing.
Yeah, you told me about that, and I forgot, excuse me, right.
We're deleting that from the agenda.
We're removing the second item under Roxanne, the public hearing, is that correct? We're removing the public hearing under Land Services, nine thirty.
Chair, I'll move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the amended agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, carried. County Board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The county board observes the Robert's Rules of Order for its meetings. Please obtain the board's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for open forum segments of the public hearing. However, public comments on agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. We begin today, please turn off your cell phones or turn them to vibrate, thank you. Open forum? Thanks, Monty. We got Mike Landware from Alberta.
Levenduski.
Or Mike, Mike Levenduski, I'm sorry about that, must have that.
You didn't see the SKI.
No, I didn't. That was another item on the agenda, so.
Morning, Mike Levenduski, Alberta Township.
Is that-
The mic on?
Is the mic on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, we couldn't hear you at first.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the November 4th meeting, county board meeting. At that time, there was a couple of things that were discussed. County Administrator during his time at the, on the agenda, covered a couple of things that weren't clear to some in the public and also to a named citizen, Mr. Watercott, who had made some social media posts, specifically the FFNE and demo and parking situation. And so I'll let Mr. Watercott speak to that at some point. I think he's got a letter that he addressed with some type of response. But the county administrator did a good job explaining some of the issues that were misconceived, I guess. The abbreviation for FFNE and the, where the funds were for that and where the funds were for the demo and the parking. I don't know if the demo and parking, the spreadsheet entries, if that was made available at the time that the the bid sheets were in the back of the room at some of the meetings. So I think that's where some of that came into effect. The FFNE, I understand, the abbreviation threw some people off. That's a non-issue. County Administrator said he hoped that some people would call his office if there's other concerns or questions. And I think Mr. Watercott put that in his response letter as well. So I hope that's taken, taken to heart by some people. But I hope the county understands that there's a lot of reasons why some people may not feel comfortable calling Monty's office or contacting you all. And so that's going to have to be overcome because a lot of people don't want to place that call, they don't want to come here. But anyway, he did a good job explaining everything. But that's kind of where the meeting went off the rail because then Mr. Watercott was called out, called a gaslighter, accused of intentionally misinforming people. Anybody that knows Mr. Watercott knows that's not him. They know he's an honorable man, he's a taxpayer, lived in this county his whole life. He was acting what he thought was accurate information. And again, I'll let his letter address that. Part of the definition of a gaslighter is blaming others for the problems you created. And so one of the things Commissioner Kapinski addressed during that time when Mr. Watercott's name was mentioned was that county board is getting beat up. And we hear about it from the state legislators all over the state and other county boards and meetings. And kind of insinuated, I guess, that also not to say that businesses don't want to move here, these aren't actual quotes, but they're similar, goes to businesses don't want to move here. And it's well noticed, Ben County, he's in the news. Well, we just read this into the record, whether it's true or not, referring to Mr. Watercott's stuff. Goes on to call, what's done gaslighting, Commissioner Johnson says, I'm sorry, Commissioner Johnson said borderline gaslighting. Kapinski says yes, it is. So I'll just add that this little Facebook post that was put out by Mr. Watercott, if the board or anybody in this room thinks that that caused a statewide backlash from other board members or legislators, no. And Mr. Watercott addressed that in his letter as well, and I'll say it here, it's because KSTP 5 came the day before the final approval for funding. Because they picked up on the story, they watched the bulldozers, bulldozers moving across the street before we had final funding in place. They came the next day, stood in the back of the room, took in the meeting, the final vote, we all know how that went. And then when they tried to talk to the board members, the board members went out the side door, never talked. I think Mr. Kapinski, Commissioner Kapinski gave a few words, that was it. Bad optics. Day before was bad optics. The only person that talked to KSTP 5 was you, Mr. Chairman, that did a interview with a reporter out in front. It was appreciated by the people, by the voters, by the taxpayers. At least you talked to them, whether or not they agree with your opinion or not, you talked to them. So that was appreciated. So between that, KSTP and Star Tribune, that's where the statewide stuff comes from. It's not, and the business is not coming here, it's not because of some little Facebook group. And in closing, you know, we keep hearing that this board is getting beat up, yep. It's been a tough time, but who else is getting beat up is the taxpayers. Tomorrow, we're going to the Foley School Board. Foley School Board is kind of what got people interested in what's going on here with the county projects. Because in 2024, Foley School Board took it upon themselves to take advantage of a bonding mechanism that did not require any input from the community, HVAC system, state allowed it. So the handful of people there put fourteen million dollars on the taxpayers for sixteen years. Twenty-five, twenty-five point two percent increase, virtually no input from the community. Couple articles by the then superintendent, who is now gone, now gone. She gave, promoted this project along with the school board, sixteen years. And now, tomorrow, they're going to address a problem they've got. They've got price changes, change orders, and their hundreds of thousands of dollars are going to be short in their project. And so they have three options, and one of those options, again, going back to the taxpayers without any input, because they started it with this way, and now they can go back and take it again. There's a couple of other options that I hope they explore before they go back to the taxpayers. But I hope that just explains a little bit why people, the taxpayers are feeling a little beat up too. It's not just school boards and county, then you got the state and all the fraud and abuse and waste there, and of course, we've all heard about that, so. The school board is also going to be looking at a voter approved referendum coming up in the near future too for operating expenses. That's also been discussed on the record at their meetings. And so at some point, I think this year, they kept their levy down pretty good. But in the coming years, that's going to be something that's going to be explored, so. Thanks for your time, appreciate your efforts.
Thanks. Natasha? Good to see you again.
Good to see you again too, good morning Commissioners. I'm Natasha Barber, I live at 22 16th Avenue Southwest in Rice. So I'm here today to bring you some news. Star Publications, which owns the Stock Rapids Herald and the Benton County News newspapers, will be combining those two newspapers as of December 1st. So the new publication will be called Benton County Herald. The first issue will come out Saturday, December 6th. We told our employees yesterday, and this announcement comes to you guys first, and then most of the Foley area public will hear today with a letter in the newspaper. And then the Stock Rapids area and Rice will hear through that newspaper on Saturday. I'll be making some calls to city leaders and the school boards and different things today too. With that decision, we will be making some changes. The first one is currently the Stock Rapids Herald goes out free to Stock Rapids and Rice residents. We'll be extending that to Foley, Gilman, and Oak Park zip codes. So not everyone in the county, but a majority of the county will be able to receive the paper for free, whether they want that print or online. And then we'll have an introductory price for, say, Benton County residents that may have a Foreston address or Princeton address or East Saint Cloud or something like that. And then along with that, we're hoping to expand our coverage. So maybe doing a few more East Saint Cloud stories and just like, you know, the Princeton, Foreston addresses that are in the corners of the county that we didn't cover before. We're hoping to expand that. So we're really committed to bringing you a fantastic paper. It hasn't been without its challenges, but this business decision will allow us to keep print alive in Benton County and continue bringing the news to the area, so. The other piece would be that we'll be closing our Foley office and will be located in Stock Rapids going forward. No changes to the team. I think I have a great team here in Benton County and we're hoping, confident that we'll continue to bring a great product. And I, you have the letter that will appear in the paper in front of you, and then my contact information is on there for questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mike Deppa.
Good morning, you all. I don't know if I'm allowed to talk about the ditch situation at this time, or if there is a special meeting that's going to be with the ditch authority?
There's a ditch meeting after this.
Mr. Chair, I would say though, that the agenda does not have an open forum on it.
Oh, okay.
Your choice.
I guess, yeah, we have to address it somehow.
So how do you want to address it? When do you want to address it?
What your concerns are?
Correct.
Mr. Chair, if I could, Mike, I guess your choice, we could add an open forum to the ditch authority agenda, but that, you're going to be sitting here a while until we get to ditch authority. So maybe between you and the chair, if you want to do it now, or if you want to wait till ditch authority, the board, we could add an open forum. All I'm saying is right now on the agenda, there is no open forum for the ditch authority.
Meeting, I can't speak, is that what you're saying?
No, it just, on the ditch authority, you couldn't, we'd have to add that today. We could do that. But you'd be sitting for a while.
You got to do what's, it's your meeting, not mine. Whatever you think.
To add it to the ditch, Mike?
So when we get to ditch authority, we'll add it to, open forum to the ditch authority meeting.
Okay. I got a couple of comments that, you know, I made it, I made it to a lot of the meetings with the government center, and it's evident that people still can't agree to disagree. You know, just let things go. You know what, the building's going up. But to beat somebody up personally, I mean, if you have something to say to somebody, say it, say it in person to them, be respectful. You know, the, the way people social media, I don't believe in social media. I mean, if, if you want to say something to somebody, talk to them, we're all adults, we can all agree to disagree. And it is what it is, you know, a decision's been made, move forward. Are we moving forward in the right way? I don't know. Sometimes I sit there and I think I could have said things differently to board members. But I can agree to disagree, and I just wish you guys have a good day and it's a good meeting here. And I'll wait for the ditch authority at the end, because I'd like to have it on record with ditch number seven. And I thank you for your time.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Consent agenda, we have items one, two, three, and four as we pull number five.
Move, move approval.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve, approve consent agenda items one through four, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, carried. Mr. Swanson? Yeah, Willie Swanson?
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
I just wanted to come and introduce myself, I'm Willie Swanson, the new district supervisor, supervising the Saint Cloud and Foley offices that have all of the felony misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor, and juvenile probation folks in the county. Currently, I'm the district supervisor for Litchfield and Alexandria, and now Benton County. Deb Anderson was the supervisor, she was promoted, she's my boss, so I'll be assuming this county as well for our district. Just a little bit about me, I'm a Saint Cloud resident in Benton County. Our house is actually split down the middle of Benton Sherburne, so I sleep in Benton, have breakfast in Sherburne, but that's another story. So, but I worked for about fifteen years as a probation parole agent in Saint Cloud. So this is sort of like a homecoming for me, coming back to supervise some folks that I know, and I know a lot of the stakeholders in the county, so I'm happy to be here. I would, at some point, like to come back and just give a more formal update with probation, and not just have to come once a year and ask for money, that sort of thing.
Hey, we'd appreciate that.
That'd be great.
That'd be great.
Get on the agenda in the future, so it was very nice to meet you, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, welcome. Christine?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just wanted to give a quick update that we did open the DMV phone lines again as of yesterday, and things are going well so far. In-person customers will always take priority over the phones, and our intent is to get calls returned within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, so just wanted to give you a quick little update on that.
I think that'll work well for the county.
Yep.
Yeah, that's been kind of a problem there. So thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
It'll move to Chris Berg.
All right, good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
So in an effort of full transparency, I wanted to have this item pulled. The, the copy of the pay voucher that was included in the packet had incorrect numbers. So in between the time that agenda items were due and today, the consultant for this project corrected that, we reissued a pay estimate to the contractor. The contractor reviewed it and did accept that. So I just wanted to be transparent that the, the final pay amount for this project, and once again, this is a trail project in the city of Rice in the Fox Meadows neighborhood, kind of comes off of Arkansas too, through that, that open area. So the final total payment to the contractor, J.R. Ferchie, is two hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty cents, which is more than what was in your packet. Just to recap, the funding, this project did receive one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars of federal transportation alternatives grant. The difference is being paid for by the city of Rice. So if, once this gets approved, we will pay the contractor, then we get our reimbursement from the feds, and then we'll invoice the city of Rice to make up the difference. So just wanted to be transparent that the numbers, final numbers are different than what was published in the agenda.
Mr. Chair, Chris, did you have administrative fees in this too, from the county side?
That did not, that was not part of this agreement.
That was before we did that.
It's the next project crossing the railroad, that we do have that in there. So to date though, we've spent close to ten thousand dollars of administrative costs working with the consultant, reviewing their quantities and all that. So just to put in, a little bit in perspective on what we've incurred administering this project.
But going forward, we have administrative contracts and-
Yeah, up to a maximum of two percent of the total construction costs.
Thank you.
Chris, so I was talking to Commissioner Heinen earlier. So on that trail, when they, they tore out the fence going east and west, that does not have to be put back?
Yeah, that's, that's something that we're continuing, it was not part of the plans, you're right, to, to put that, that back, so. We may have to look at that as a, as a maintenance, because that parcel is a Benton County parcel. The state gave that to us when they built that interchange project, and it hasn't been an issue until, till now.
Well, I told Commissioner Heinen that we don't want to see the state come back in two or three years and say, hey Benton County, you got to put that fence back.
Obviously, the, the fence was in there to keep people out of that stormwater pond. Nobody has ever seen water in that.
Correct.
What came up is when we put back the fence, if we're acknowledging that a fence is needed, do we need to put fence along the whole trail? Which is additional, quite a bit of additional length of fence that, that we were not budgeting for. So it kind of, kind of got caught up in that stalemate of what do we need to do with the fence? So that's why nothing's addressed yet.
So we're just going to leave it as is now and wait to see what happens in the future?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to have people using that trail next to stormwater, dry stormwater pond.
I guess, one of the concerns I always have is that there's a lot of four-wheel traffic right along there. Next thing you know, they're going to be going down and up, you know.
And then, then we may, yeah, we'll certainly have to address it then, so.
Good point.
Yeah, right.
The storm fence.
Storm fence.
Storm fence.
Okay, so this is, move for approval?
Move for approval, item five off the consent, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion made in second, for second to approve consent agenda item number five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, carried. Thanks, Chris.
Very good, thank you.
Troy Heck.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
I have before you a request to sign a contract for a tool that is going to help us log activities in the jail. Over my time in the sheriff's office, I've said a number of times in probably much more colorful language that when you're dealing with a records management system, they all fall, fall short of your expectations because they are such huge pieces of software and there's so much to control. Our job when we're selecting a records management system is to find the one that falls short the least. So we think we've done that with Tyler. And as this record management system rolls out across our entire agency, we found that there is a, a shortcoming with it in the jail. We have an obligation to log many things that happen in the jail. Primarily, we want to make sure that we have good logs to show when our detention officers are doing their well-being checks, good logs to show when we're delivering meds, good logs to show that we're addressing inmate issues. The Tyler jail management system will log those things, but it's very difficult to extract that information out. So recognizing this shortfall, we found this partner software that they have in several of their installations, including the, our partners over in Stearns County, this Guardian RFID. This is a very nice piece of software that is specifically designed to log these items. And it does it in a way that creates ease for the detention officers to, to make these things happen almost seamlessly. It uses devices much like a smartphone, and it'll, it'll allow you to scan tags on the, on the wall as you're going along, on your well-being checks, it'll allow the detention officer to put comments in. It'll allow the detention officer to scan a bracelet on an inmate and make comment about that inmate. And importantly, it allows us to go back and create logs and run reports so that if we're ever questioned by the state or we ever need to find an incident for whatever reason internally, externally, we can do that easily and we can have defendable logs that show that we're doing our jobs properly. So we're asking the board to approve the contract with Guardian RFID to bring this supplemental piece of software in to help our detention officers do their job.
Questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Monty, where would this come from?
I think Troy's identified the jail sheriff, or sheriff's budget, and also what we call the inmate welfare account. I'm not sure the split.
So the plan is to pay for the, the initial cost of thirteen thousand and change from our jail budget. We have some, we have some leftover funds in our 2025 budget, and we'll make some choices in the 2026 budget to ensure that we can fund that thirteen thousand as we're bringing it in. Going forward, in years two through six, that twelve thousand ninety-five is going to come out of inmate welfare fund. And that is a fund that is created when our inmates buy commissary items, pay fees, that type of thing. So that is not, that is not taxpayer funds.
And I think that that balance hovers around fifty thousand-ish roughly at the moment, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair?
I'll second.
Motion made in second to approve the contract with Guardian. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Monty Headley, County Administrator.
I see Cheryl and Chad are here from Benton Communications for a broadband update.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning. Good morning.
Yes, Monty had asked us to provide a broadband update, and just wanted to give you a little bit of history, and Chad's going to jump in here too. We met with you gentlemen and ladies, I believe at that time it was all gentlemen, back in 2022, when Benton County asked us if we would be interested in doing a proposal to help serve some of the areas in Benton County that did not have broadband service. At that time, I looked, went back and looked at the proposal and the presentation we made, and we were selected to do that. And just want to give you a little history, at that time, we offered a hundred meg up to one gig of service, and we still actually have the same pricing, a hundred meg is fifty-nine ninety-five, but we actually reduced our one gig service to a hundred nine ninety-five. So we actually reduced our price for our one gig service. But really, to give you a little bit of our experience, currently, we're up to six thousand customers that we serve with broadband over our area. And we built out to a lot of areas with the help of the county, the Minnesota State Broadband Program, and the townships that committed money from Benton County, and then we went into some other areas. And then we went into some other areas, we're in Morrison County, et cetera. We have over 6,000 broadband customers, and approximately about 4,000 come from Benton County.
Wow.
So, to give you a little idea, then, back in 2022, there was a $1,060,000 grant that was given to Benton Communications to build out Northwest Benton County, the Oak Park, Ronaby area, and the Mayo Lake Golden Spike area is what we called our projects. Those were huge projects that we did at that time, and that money came from the American Rescue Plan that came through the county. And then we also, again, received Minnesota deed, and then Benton Communications put in a large sum of money. So, with that, I just wanted to let you know that the Ronaby Oak Park area was over 15 miles plowed, there were 77 establishments passed, 55 of those were plowed in, and 50 people installed in that area. Our total cost after the grants received from the county and from the Minnesota State Broadband Grant was $447,000. Then we also did the Northwest Benton County Project. That was 10.26 miles plowed, 24 establishments were passed, 19 were plowed and 15 installed. The total cost for that project after grants was $150,826. So, as I'm saying these amounts, you can see that Benton put in a substantial amount into these projects also. And then the Mayo Lake Golden Spike Road Project was approximately 116 miles plowed, there was 394 establishments passed, Pam can, I can smile at her, because she was one of those, and 215 of those were plowed in, and 182 people were installed. Some of these figures have increased since then, because as we've been going on with the project, or as we've been completed, people have moved in, or people have realized that had the need for internet. And that total cost, final cost, was $1,283,029. That was, again, after the grants, so that was the money that Benton Communications put into these projects. And then finally, and I'm going to smile at Chad here, because a couple of years later, Benton South came up, and we had the Commissioners come visit our office a couple of times, especially Commissioner Kapinski and Commissioner Johnson, and said, and we were getting tired. We had done all these projects, and again, we have done projects in other places. We had overbuilt our own COAX in Rice, so Chad and I were getting tired, and we thought we were going to take a year off. Well, the Commissioners came, and they said, we have some money to put in, so that was where the $2 million grant was available from the county and the townships from the American Rescue Plan. And then we said, well, we'll do it if we get a grant from the state of Minnesota from their broadband program. And sure enough, we got a grant. So, we started this project back in, just a little bit in '23, really didn't start having it, hit it in '24 very hard, and proud to say that in '25, this month, actually, we'll be completing the installs that were wanted the service. That was over 251 miles plowed.
Wow.
There was 988 establishments passed, 872 of those asked to be plowed in, so that's great. So, that's really what we want. They may not want this service today, but we really encourage them to get it plowed in. So, if they want it tomorrow, or if they sell their place, we can go out there, and Chad can relate to going out there in the middle of winter and try to put fiber on the ground. And so, anyway, 467 were installed, and that number's growing every day. That total cost, minus the grants, and this isn't a final cost, because we're still closing up some of the, like I said, some of the installs, was $2,327,000 that Benton Communications put into Benton County. So, we are just very happy to say that we have reached our plans. All of Benton County is built out at this point, everybody in Benton County has access to high-speed internet. I'm smiling at Commissioner Kapinski, because he knows he wants us to come into the city of Sock Rapids. We already have the over the 100 meg available to them, so we cannot get funding for that. And we've learned over the years that it does not pay to go into an area that's already got competition, because you can see the figures that we have paid out.
Yeah.
So, we, like I said, I want to thank the county and the townships, because we had townships that contributed money also. And again, without the state of Minnesota broadband program, we wouldn't have been able to do that. Maybe Chad wants to relate to a little bit of what we have all done and what we've accomplished and what we've seen.
Yeah, so, my name is Chad Koenig, I'm the operations manager with Communications. I oversee the technical department. We did wrap up all of our main construction on the Benton South Grant Project in early July. It was, I believe the project went very well. We have definitely done our due diligence to serve all of Benton County for people that did not have high-speed internet access. You know, coming from a cooperative mentality, I think that, you know, a lot of the bigger companies, I guess, have left the rural communities in the dust. And, you know, at this day and age, you know, not having access to high-speed internet is definitely detrimental to the population. So, just in, you know, true cooperative fashion, you know, we're happy and proud that you guys chose us to be the provider, you know, for your county as well. It's been fun projects going outside of our I-REIT area. You know, in an update since we first put a proposal together, we did partner with another company, and we are able to offer landline telephone service, which, you know, Cheryl didn't allude to. Quite honestly, we were actually kind of blown away with the amount of landlines that we have ported over from CenturyLink. So, you know, that portion of the business has been going very well as well. So, if you guys have any technical questions, you know, I certainly answer any of those.
Mr. Chair? I personally want to thank Benton Communications for stepping up. I don't think you really alluded to how many phone calls, emails, in person, almost begging to take on that last big chunk, which was huge. Without you guys stepping up, that probably wouldn't have gotten completed. So, I, kudos to you guys and your teams and making the deadlines. It is truly going to help Benton County for years to come.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, too, I want to reiterate, thank you for keeping your doors open to us. I know sometimes we almost got the eye roll, like, why are you back here again? We have already told you no. But appreciate you accepting us and.
I think the last, I think the last meeting, I actually said, I'll get down on my knees if you really want.
And then you smiled, and I said, let's see what we can do.
Yeah, no, we definitely appreciate the teamwork. You know, I think that's, you know, a big part of all of this as well. You know, for a company of our size, we certainly couldn't have done it all on our own.
Right.
We definitely appreciate the grant projects that the state of Minnesota had put together. You know, it was an absolute excellent program for the citizens of the state. You know, and for you guys to come through and assist us with being able to do this build-out, definitely made it feasible for a company of our size to be able to do it as well, so.
And it was really nice to be able to do it with a local business.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, quite honestly, you know, we've had, you know, projects of this magnitude don't go out with their issues, right? And, you know, with some of the residents, you know, needing to get ahold of somebody at CenturyLink, and it was an absolute nightmare.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, that's kind of some of the feedback that's very positive that we get back, is it's nice that they can actually call and talk to somebody that literally lives right up the road, right? You know, we kind of pride ourselves on same-day trouble service, you know, if somebody does have problems, you know, it's not three weeks down the road we'll get to you. You know, we make every effort to do it within the same business day, if not, we'll be there the next business day. So, you know, we've had a lot of positive feedback along those lines as well.
Absolutely. Mr. Chair, one more thing.
Chair.
Peeling this back, a couple of years ago, the county in Benton Telephone got an award from AMC on this. I just want to bring that to the forefront, and thanking our county board for following this fate of getting broadband to everybody, which is such a key utility these days. The county really believed in building into our county, paying, you know, basically, I've got this saying, you know, it's a gift that'll keep giving. So, we, on all of our, for the most part, all of our ARPA, we're one of the very few counties that put it all back into the county, whether it's through the cities, through broadband, through whatever. So, we didn't put it in general fund and use it for expenses, so.
We are very rare in that.
We, we're one of the very, very, very few.
Very, very few that did that, so.
Mr. Chair, Cheryl, I want to put you on the spot, but did I hear you say roughly you have a 50% take rate so far in the South Project?
That would be correct, but that's growing every day. Like I said, as people learn that their neighbor has it or whatever, but the big thing, like I want to mention, I mentioned before, excuse me, was is that the people got it plowed in.
Yeah.
And that was huge, because again, like I said, sooner or later, there's a good chance that they're going to want it. And so, that's what we're going with, because just to give you an idea, in our Benton Communications area, which is our legacy area, we have about 80% penetration with broadband. So, we're really excited to see that. It gave us the opportunity to grow, but we couldn't have did it without you guys and the townships, and also with Chad's department. Like I said, when we took on 900 customers with this Benton South Project, it was pretty scary, but we went forth and we didn't add any employees, and we got through it. Now, we have a few other people, townships in Morrison County that are at our door begging, begging us to. But, of course, the funding isn't there anymore as it was, but we've gave them some other ideas, and we're hopefully going to be able to work with them in the future. So, again, Monty asked us to provide an update, and we're more than proud to take, or more than happy to take any questions. But again, thank you for everything. And with that, I just want to let you know, I don't know if this is a pleasure or not, I am going to be, I wanted to see this project through, so I'm going to be retiring January 30th. We have a new manager in place already, going to do a great job for us, Josh Anderson, but Chad's going to be around a few more years, so if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask him.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair.
We also, I also did get a very good message from Sock Rapids School District. They had no idea you guys went by their school, and Corey Zimples, like, it's been a game changer for them, so.
Yeah, and they had ran into a issue a few years back where their phone systems had went down. And so, basically, district-wide, they rely on the internet for their phone systems. And, you know, we had a connection to the Rice Elementary already, and so, yes, we worked a deal with the school district to provide them with a 1-gig backhaul, backup circuit, straight down to the high school. So, in the event that situation, their main circuit would go down, it was a failover, and I know they just had that issue again here a few weeks ago, and everything worked.
Yeah.
Exactly according to plan. So, that main interconnection did go down to the high school and to the district offices, and, you know, they're great at shooting me an email, letting us know, hey, you're going to see some additional traffic on that circuit coming through here, because we are using it. And it's been a very good deal for them. They use that for a lot of the technical upgrades and backups to their equipment with the MacBooks and the iPads that they have at the school district, so. No, that's been a great partner to work with them as well.
Great.
So.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just have one question, just for clarification for me, because I've had a couple of calls from people that live on the Golden Spike. Is there, on the north side of Golden Spike, I haven't heard anything, south side of Golden Spike, is there some that are not able to hook up on the south side?
It all kind of depends on where they fall in line. You know, our boundary is, I want to say, just to the northeast of the racetrack there. So, it kind of depends on how far down towards Sock Rapids they are.
Well, and it's coming, it's coming right off the last roundabout, those people on the south side are.
Sock Rapids. Yep, so the Midtown Hall is pretty much the border, that going directions would be west, I think in my mind, would be not included, because they already had offering of services, or they should have had offering of services, and so, they were not part of the grant plan at all.
We're working on that, yeah.
And the only reason I'm asking is because some of these people are saying they have CenturyLink, which, I don't know.
It's dial-up.
It is dial-up, and they are saying they don't have other options out there, so.
So, at this point, kind of when we went through in our state broadband grant projects, Cooperative Network Services, CNS, was our engineering company that went through and studied all of the broadband maps that were available to the state of Minnesota. And we essentially applied all the way up to wherever those maps would allow us to gain funding for. So, if there still are a few onesie-twosie residences that kind of slipped through the cracks, you know, I would encourage them, the state of Minnesota still has a line extension program. And so, those residents could actually go to the state of Minnesota's broadband site and request, it's a small questionnaire, and they could request service, and that gets sent out to us providers twice a year. And if they're able to be, if they're eligible, we would be able to essentially bid up to a certain amount for funding to try to get the onesie-twosies that are still left. And I know that program is still in place.
Okay, and you said the state of Minnesota's website, and then go to their broadband?
Yes, and it's the line extension program.
And we can send that to Monty, if Monty went mine for again, on to the Commissioners then, so we can, it's just a one-page telling them how to get there. We just did that with Pierce Township, they wanted, and they had no funding, so we talked to the program about that, with them, and they actually went out to all their constituents and actually helped them sign up. There's no guarantee, but as Chad said, the opportunity with the state would say, okay, these people are interested, how much could you do it for, and there's some funding available? That's the only funding available. So, like I said, we can share that with Monty, Pam, and then we can, he can distribute that to you. But like I said, the area can have access to over 100 meg. If they already have access to 100 meg, they're not eligible for the program.
And my understanding is these people are not eligible with that 100 meg, because they're too far out of.
Yeah, so I would highly encourage them to go apply for that program.
Okay.
And it wouldn't just be, you know, Benton Communications that would be able to bid on that. You know, if Charter's right down the road, they'd be able to do it. You know, Parvick is another one, you know, that has fiber in the area, so.
All right.
And that 100 meg is so sporadic, too, in Sock Rapids, where if it's in the perfect time of the day, you're, I mean, everybody's using it, it just drops. But you still have 100 meg at midnight. So, the county is better than I do at home, and I need it. So, we'll keep working on it.
Yeah, and with our networks and stuff, too, I mean, you know, we are capable of doing multi-gig services as well, right? You know, it's just all about the electronics that's on the other side, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for a great day.
Congratulations, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Government Center Project update?
Pete is here.
Morning, Commissioners, Pete Filippi, Contiguity Group. Just a quick monthly update on the construction happenings out on the site. Since I was here last, we've had a good month. Notice looking outside, all the stair towers, the elevator towers have all been constructed. Those act as sheer walls for the structure, it creates a solid diaphragm for the building to push up against. The deep underground sewer line has been installed, the temporary, or the actual water line's coming into the building with a temporary patch has been installed. And with that being said, we're starting to erect the steel. So, last couple of weeks, many semis of steel have been unloaded. Bright Buck is on site, starting to organize that and starting to erect the steel on site. The plan in place right now is we're going to set the two-story frame, come back and put the roof steel on, and then drop down and do the decking on the second floor. With that being said, the mother nature's been in our favor, things have progressed really nicely, and we're looking at 40 degrees here the rest of this week, and even in the next. So, with that, I'll address any questions anybody has.
Yes, we're good.
Sounds good. Well, have a happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
You too.
Thank you, Pete.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I have before you the request for a general wage adjustment for non-union employees. Of course, for our union folks, we're addressing that matter through ongoing negotiations. Hopefully, we'll have some agreements soon. We do have three tentative agreements, and those groups are, will be conducting ratification votes, I believe actually two today, and I'm not sure about the other third. But my recommendation for you all is a 3% general wage adjustment for our non-union folks, and that is consistent with those tentative agreements. So, we're always trying to be consistent with what's occurring in labor negotiations, Mr. Chair. So, that'd be 3% January 1st.
Do you?
Any questions?
No.
I think it's self-explanatory.
Yeah.
Motion to adopt the general wage adjustment at 3% for the non-union employees effective January 1, 2026.
I'll second.
Motion made in second to adopt the non-union employees 3%. Any other discussion? Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Isn't Chris up?
We're going to, Monty?
Monty?
We're going to do the recruitment.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Recruitment.
Recruitment. Oh, yes. Well, obviously, we need to start working on a county engineer recruitment. And historically, when we've had department heads leave us, we've asked two board members to be part of a selection committee. I know we, a couple of times we did, we use an executive search firm, I would suggest we'll do our best and manage that recruitment internally. But I wanted to ask if you all would like to appoint two board members to a selection committee, and then we'll get that process started.
I guess the only thing that I have is that I think one of the two should come from either District Two or District One because that's where the, that part of the county controls a huge amount of what the county. That would be my only request, I guess, from that part.
And I know that Sauk Rapids has a ton of stuff coming, potentially.
That would be the two places we look at.
I'd make, I'd make a motion for Commissioner Johnson to be on the recruiting committee.
That's one. Who's the second?
Did you want to be on it?
Either me or you.
Do you want it or?
Don't fight over it.
Flip a coin, right?
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
I'll put, I'll make a motion for Commissioner Heinen.
Okay, so motion's been made for Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Heinen to be on the search committee for a new county engineer. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So Mr. Chair, I will definitely convene a meeting of, and typically, you know, when we had department heads leave, we've invited someone from outside the county to be a part of that selection committee, so we might want to talk about, you know, another county engineer from another, to join us on that and so on. So I'll, we'll get that organized soon.
All right.
Thank you.
Roxanne.
All right, good morning Commissioners, Mr. Chair. We have a plat entitled Schmidt Edition submitted by Dennis and Judy Schmidt. They're looking to plat two lots on their 100, I believe it's 126 acres of property. It is in St. George Township. Both lots will be buildable lots, they will be accessed off of a township road. The planning commission did review this and held a public hearing last Thursday and the recommendation was forward with approval.
Pretty straightforward.
It was very straightforward.
I'll move for approval, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Motion's been moved and seconded for approval of the final plat entitled Schmidt Edition. Any other discussions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
I'm actually going to hand this over to Lindsay Knolslaw.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm just here to give an update on the federal shutdown and the SNAP benefits, so the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, and then also the Minnesota Family Investment Program for the food benefits as well. Just update, the longest federal government shutdown in U.S. history ended on November 12th. The House passed a continuing resolution and the President signed it on last Wednesday night. And then the continuing resolution funds most of the federal government operations through January of '26, however, some programs such as the USDA, which administers SNAP, have funding through September of '26. So Minnesota began issuing full SNAP benefits as of Friday, November 7th. Households can currently use their money once it arrives on their EBT card, which is their card where the benefits go on. Our system that we use, MAXIS, is currently up and running to determine eligibility for SNAP, so everything is on schedule as usual, back to normal right now.
Mr. Chair. So Lindsay, they said that there was going to be delay, so when they sign up, is there a week or three-week delay on the benefits or anything?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay.
No, everything's running back as usual prior to the shutdown.
Mr. Chair, have you seen an increase in applications?
Not yet, no.
Okay. Other questions?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
This time, we're going to recess the county board meeting and go to public health, or community health board.
We'll call over the Ben County Community Health Board, note that all Commissioners are here. Approve or amend the agenda? Jaclyn gave us a handout?
Correct, yep, nothing to, nothing substantial, but within the board packet, their agenda item for the first consent agenda item for the WIC contract, there is an updated agenda item for that. We're looking for ratification of the contract, not approval of the contract, so we have an updated item for that. And then, nothing to add to the agenda, just want to leave you with a copy of our Public Health Department newsletter for November.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Now to call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda item one through five, what would we like to do with that?
I will make a motion to approve consent agendas one through five with the correction to the Women, Infant, and Children's Contract Amendment.
Thank you for that.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Now to call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Jaclyn, WIC program.
Sure, so as Lindsay just mentioned, related to the federal government shutdown, our WIC program, as you know, is federally funded. We did not experience any delays or any changes within our WIC program throughout the shutdown. However, as you heard, on November 12th, the government ended the shutdown and within that, Congress passed a bill that which reopened the federal government. The bill funds our WIC benefits and services through September, which is the entirety of our grant cycle, so that will be unchanged with those appropriations. It is an 8.2 billion full funding, which was the request that the state had put in for the WIC funding. So they received the full amount and that maintains the current expanded WIC fruit and vegetable package benefit at $26 with funding for peer breastfeeding program experiencing no changes. So everything with our WIC program is operating and no impact or change at this point.
Great. COVID funding.
Sure, so I'm bringing back today the COVID funding reinstatement and wanted to provide an update. As you recall, Courtney had provided and updated a previous board meeting that we'd be looking to utilize some of the COVID funds that were reinstated to help offset some of the costs with the new building immunization space, or immunization room. MDH provided an update to our request of supplies and equipment, so just wanted to update the board as the guidance has become more strict over the past year on what items we'll be able to purchase and help offset some costs for. What I'm going to read off here is not an all-inclusive list, this is just some initial items that we've submitted to MDH and will certainly be in consultation with MDH about other allowable items that could be utilized underneath our grant-funded items, because as much as we can try to offset the costs, we'd like to do that using these grants. So some of the items that we've already talked with MDH and that have been approved would be our Sharps wall mounts, containers, lockable medical supply cabinets, immunization storage supplies, organization supplies, glove wall mount holders, temperature monitoring devices, thermometers for immunization rooms, signage, vaccination, talking points, materials, floor mats, safety equipment for our staff and for the immunization room, and software needs. So just wanted to provide that update listing. A couple of the items that they are not able to fund through those COVID vaccine grant funding would be a vaccine fridge, the medical chair, an exam chair, and technology equipment. So just, really just for simply a matter of minutes, wanted to make sure that I provided an updated list as that has changed since the last update we provided.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioners.
Oh, Jaclyn, would, we just had our call yesterday, would any of that stuff be able to be purchased through the opioid?
Um, I think I'd have to look at the allowable expenditures to see if anything would fit under that, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I think it depends on, yeah, on purpose and need and services that would be provided, so we'd have to look at that a little bit more deeply.
Mr. Chair, so how long do you think this funding's going to go on, on the COVID?
The COVID funding ends in March of 2026, so our Healthy Families Unit, the unit that Courtney oversees, will be working on purchasing these items pretty soon here.
Yes.
Because we want to utilize as much of that as we can prior to the ending of that funding, yep. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, and you're looking at just under 738,000.
Yeah, so the current amount we have for COVID funding grant, yep, 737,680. Yeah, so we'll make, we'll utilize what we can, but it's a short turnaround time and really between the time that they reinstated the funds to when they're closing out the grant is pretty quick.
Mr. Chair?
So where does the funds go that's not spent?
Back to the state.
They'll go back to the state.
And back to the Fed.
And back to the Feds.
Yep, yep. In the past, you know, they've done some reallocation, but I'm not certain, I haven't heard what they plan to do with these funds after they've gone back, so I'm not sure.
Yeah.
It'll be interesting, but there's pot of money for us to use, otherwise it goes back. Great, next.
Okay.
Consider the agreement.
Yeah, so the next one is a weaving cultures agreement. So this is a new contract that has been included in your packet today. We have been experiencing a challenge in finding interpreters and translation services for the Anuak language, which is a language, from what I understand, from South Sudan and Ethiopian area. So we have run into some issues where we've been trying to serve some clients and haven't been able to find interpreter services with our existing contracts. And so Courtney's team has identified another contracted services that has the language that's needed, and so just looking for approval of the contracts so that we can utilize that with our clients and families.
Where's this funding coming from then?
So the funding typically comes from the program that the individual's being served out of, so it can vary, but most often times, it will come from our family home visiting grants. Within those, either that or local public health grant, and then once those are exhausted, then we utilize our operating budget, so.
So use the grants first before touching?
Always, yeah. Yep, we always try and use our grants first, yeah. And sometimes I think for spell interpreter services to health plans as well. I think certain, certain fun, certain services, I believe we can also sell some to health plans, so, yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the community health board and weaving cultures language services.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? If now to call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jaclyn, anything else?
Yeah, so just two quick items. One, I just wanted to express a thank you also to this board for the Benton Communications work. As you know, internet and technology access drastically impacts ability for individuals to be healthy, so just wanted to express a thank you from the Health Department on that work and for supporting that with Benton Communications. And then the other thing I wanted to do was hand out a copy of our November newsletter, and then that's it for us.
Great, thank you.
Do you want to? Probably there's people here. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jaclyn.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Jaclyn. At this time, we'll adjourn the Ben County Community Health Board at 10 o'clock and turn it back over to the board chair.
And from here, we're going to go to ditch authority meeting? Turn it over to Commissioner Johnson? All right, we'll call our ditch authority meeting to order, note that all Commissioners are present. We'll need approval or amendments to our agenda, and just a reminder, we did have a request for open forum, so if we could add that to our agenda. I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair, to add open forum.
I'll second.
Motion is second to add open forum to our agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Move on to open forum right away. Mike?
Good morning again.
Morning.
I wrote a petition to the county disputing that there never was a meeting in '22 or '24 on ditch number seven on the total assessment when the project manager came out and did our total dollar amount that was assessed to each property owner. I don't believe I'm being assessed properly on my land parcels, and the letter I wrote was to whom it may concern because I don't know who the ditch authority person is. And if it's the Commissioners, I believe we should change the ditch authority, it's nothing personal, is that, you know, if we have planning and zoning, we should have ditch authority people as well. You know, somebody that specializes in the ditch authority, you know, when we build, when we build buildings or we get permits for certain items, you know, the, we have, we have different committees, and I believe there should be a different committee other than the Commissioners, because Commissioners are going to take the beat up on that ditch. You know, if there's somebody on, some type of way that that could change, I would like to see that discussed and changed because it's not accurate for them to take the brunt of something that's not theirs. And for other people to make a decision on the ditch is that it doesn't affect, I have some concern on there, and I wrote on there, "To whom it may concern, ditch assessment notice. The Benton County Ditch Authority made assessments to my property that are not accurate to the parcel number 01.00362.00, county ditch number seven, in the amount of $335.62. And also parcel 01.036302, in the amount of 300 and, or $204.54. As the property owner, there was never a final meeting or discussion regarding on the ditches listed above. I believe this all occurred the year 2022 and 2024. The property owner is appealing to dispute the Benton County Ditch Authority. The following ditches are not on my property, number one, and they don't have to be on my property to, for me to get a benefit per the letter that was sent from the county. They're saying that the, my water flows that way, some does, some don't, okay? I am charged on two parcels of land. The one parcel, the, my opinion is, is that it does not reflect me. Ditch number seven is on Highway 25. Mr. Pop would know where ditch seven starts. I don't have the ditch on my property, on ditch number seven. I have to clean my own personal ditches to get the water to run, and I fork that bill out of my own personal pocket for that. I don't think that that's right. I think that there should be a reassessment and a reevaluation of who's paying what amount on those ditches and who's benefiting from it. I got a list of the people for ditch number seven, and it comes up to a total of $35,053. I'm getting assessed approximately $600 on a ditch that does not be on my property and my water does, I don't benefit from it that way. I have to clean on my side to get my water to flow that way. So I would like the ditch authority somehow, some way to come up and reevaluate how the people are being taxed on that ditch number seven. It says the following ditches ain't on my property, following property owner requests to be made whole in every way. Whole in every way means that I want to be reimbursed for what I paid that doesn't benefit me. You know, if a whole parcel of land, if I'm getting assessed on a whole parcel of land, and exact what I want to mean by that is 40 acres, my 40 acres would not all benefit. Maybe five acres of the 40 might benefit on it, but why should I be assessed a total amount? Mine should be, I agree, I think should be lower, and that's for the ditch authority to come up and do that. You can take that drone that you fly around with that's not accurate, and you can draw any lines you want to li, want on any piece of paper and believe what's on that piece of paper. Until you walk that property and you see where that water actually runs to, then that would be fair. I don't think it's fair how the assessments are being done on ditch number seven. I can't speak for any of the other ditches, but there hasn't been any maintenance done on the ditch in 2025 that I'm aware of. We're collecting $35,000, the county is, and it's being put in a fund. For what? Why are we collecting for something that's not being done? I paid approximately 600 bucks above and beyond my taxes to be put into account of the county. If the county's taking that money and using it for another ditch, that's wrong. That's my money for that ditch.
Okay.
You should not be taking money from one ditch to another ditch to fund, what do you call it, the process. Go ahead, Ed.
That's, that's not true, Mike, because each ditch has got its own fund, that's throughout the whole state. So that part, if you're paying into ditch number seven, ditch number seven's fund stays there, that part we know.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, it does not go, I believe it was ditch seven or ditch, ditch seven years ago had a fund, and we did some partial cleaning and it was a crappy job, don't get me wrong, and they used that fund, so there was no, nothing had to be a public hearing or anything to do those funds, and that was shortly, I think, after I got on the board. So that part, there's no, that, that doesn't happen, Mike. You can ask, the auditor treasurer can show you all the money with ditch six, ditch seven. You can ask, the auditor treasurer can show you all the money, what ditch six, ditch seven, ditch 12, what sits in there. The other, the other question I have for you is, when you clean your private ditch, does it flow to ditch seven, or is it, do you know where it goes?
Comes out to the county ditch, and I have to get a permit. The two ditches that are on my property that I clean, I have to get a permit because it comes to the county ditch, and I pay for that out of my pocket.
Right.
I, I don't get it.
Well, we did do the redetermination of benefits, but we can, we can have that looked at.
I was just gonna say, Mike, do you recall receiving a packet back in '22, which was called a redetermination of benefits, where it would have explained the drainage process from your property to CD seven?
I prob, I probably did receive it, but I didn't read it. I gotta be straight up on it.
Yep, and that's fair.
Because I don't under, I don't understand the language.
So I guess if I could suggest, maybe between Adam and Chris, we could get the copy of that redetermination of benefits for you, for how the viewers determine you have a benefit? The problem with it is, and again, this is ditch law, not ditch authority decision. Ditch law allows a 30-day appeal. Well, obviously, we're three-plus years past the appeal process for that, so ditch law dictates that part of it. To my understanding also, and I could be wrong, this is my understanding, is county boards who manage the ditch systems in their county, they are the ditch authority, unless it's given out to like the soil and water conservation districts or other units, the county boards, it's a different hat, they become the ditch authority, and that's statewide and in ditch law, to my understanding. So to my knowledge, we can't just hand it off to a different committee, because it's a part of the responsibility of the county board.
Okay, I understand that.
Mr. Chair?
I would, I would definitely like to look into that, though.
If you'd like to hand it off.
Yeah, I'd like to hand.
Cause we, yeah. Did mention about talking and trying to hand it off to soil.
Yeah, and they're not interested. I could talk to jury myself, but anyways, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, so back when this all started, Mr. Pop was commissioner, and he's well aware of this, is, is that one of the neighbors took their water and drained it back into my property.
Yes.
You know what was done about that? Right there, zero by the commissioners and zero by the ASC office. The comment was, "Maybe you should get along with your neighbors a little better." But when somebody goes and drains water and changes the flow of water back into my property, and I paid more than the $35,000 to put in tile to make my groundwork, how do you, would you feel? Think about it. I stuck more money into tiling because they ran water back into my property. Ed's aware of that, and you know what, you want, you know what the comment was? "We don't want to touch it."
Mike, would you be okay with us having Adam or Chris reach out to you and getting you a copy of that redetermination of benefits? And also, we could get you a copy of the affidavit showing that the public hearings were published and noticed?
Yes, that's fine, and, and it's something I missed, probably. I, I'm guessing I did miss it, but to have what happened, you need to hear exactly how it was handled. I hope you guys don't handle it that way this time. Is it, is it beyond? Maybe, yeah. But you know what? When I have to go tile my ground, to farm my ground, and then I get assessed on these other people's ditches, and I'm paying everybody else's other way, that's not right. Plus, I have two ditches to the north of me that I have to maintenance and clean by myself. Nobody's, nobody's doing those ditches, the county ain't doing them, but, but they're my ditches. Okay? Because they're on my property. But also, what I want to say is, is the ditches are on the other people's property, why don't they pay for the cleaning of the ditches on their property? I, I don't get it.
Well, when you go back to the ditches in general, they were established way back in, like, the early 1900s, and we and you and everybody here had nothing to do with that, and it was put in state statute that this is how the ditch system in the state of Minnesota works. And in Benton County, they were neglected for so long that they weren't, kept up to date and all that other stuff, and then we finally got requests to clean out, I think we started with ditch 13 and 15 way back in 2017, and we've moved forward. And as you know, Mike, higher crop prices dictate more interest in having great drainage, because drainage works. I mean, everybody that farms knows that drainage is a big benefit. It's almost as much benefit to you as irrigation is to me.
Correct.
So that part is there, but ditch law was established way back when, so it, you can't change ditch law at state statute. And so I, I'd be interested to sit down with you and, when we get them, redetermination of benefits, to see how it runs, how your water runs in the ditch seven, or how they explain that it gets there.
Mr. Chair? I just, I wish that, that they would put some of these seminars on that we go to for the ditches, for, for the public, because I think it would shed a lot of light into what?
Right.
You know, what we have to learn that, at these, at these, uh, conferences, because, I mean.
I mean, I always thought that, that, you know, the larger counties, the, the Renvilles and the McLeod's and that, that they had, all their ditches were completely, you know, there's no problem, so that's not the case. Land changes hands, this person doesn't agree. They have the same issues that we do, but you always gotta go back to ditch law that was established. We didn't establish it, you didn't establish it, and that's, you know, that's kind of the holdup here on how it is. And I, you know, I mean, if you don't like the way, we want to do some maintenance and kind of keep it up, get it back to, to par where it should be, um, then, you know, that's up to the people on these ditches, when we have the ditch meetings, that, you know, they can determine if we don't, if they don't want ditch seven, if they don't want to do an assessment to try and fix it or, or have this cushion in there so we can do, like, when there's a washout or a blowout or something like that, um, that's their privilege, but we have to put it before them in order to get the assessment.
But once we get a valid petition?
Once you get a valid petition.
We have to act on that.
And to your point, Mike, I think it's, it's kind of proven today, it's, it's so critical that when these notices and stuff come out to landowners, there's a reason for that, right? I mean, you're not the only one to say, "I probably didn't read it."
Yeah.
That happens a lot.
I'm just being straightforward and honest.
I appreciate it, and it happens a lot, and so it's hard, because the ditch authority's done what they need to do to get that information out and notice and send mailings and everything, but we can't force you to come to the hearings. A lot of people just don't show up, and it's probably because they didn't pay attention to it. That's just the fact.
Well, just think of this, Mr. Johnson, if, when they, when you have a person change the flow of water back into your property?
Yeah.
And then you have to, um, have drainage put in, tiling and stuff, is that right?
I, I wouldn't say it's right, but part of the problem is, is this is the first I've ever heard of that.
Well, Ed's heard.
How long ago was this?
Ed, Ed's heard it, and they didn't want to touch it over there, and the commissioners didn't touch it here. But now, now I'm cleaning my ditches that are to the north of me, and I'm getting assessed for everybody else's after the fact that I paid over $35,000 to tile.
Yeah. How long ago was that, Mike, that they drained it in years?
I, it's been a while.
It's been a while, yeah.
I, I can't even tell you that. What, uh, Mike Watercott was the one that did the tiling? And they did it at night, and then when I brought it up to, um, water and soil, he says, "Well, you have to take it to the commissioners," and then when I took it to the commissioners, the commissioner says that this is, um, I can't think of, um, the terminology name as, um, it's, it's water, it's high, higher up, the water, the wire, the watershed. Look, Army Corps of Engineers. So when I contacted the Carmen, the Army Corps of Engineers, they pushed it back to the county.
And didn't, didn't we contact Bowser, too?
I don't recall.
I think we contacted Bowser. I mean, it was, you know, truthfully, it was, it was kind of a bad deal, it, you know, it all ended up in his field, but there's, you know, nobody wanted to touch it, because it wasn't, the ditch authority didn't have nothing to do with it.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, the ditch authority didn't have anything to do with it.
The county didn't have anything to do with it?
Soil and water said it was, you know, I don't know, DNR or somebody was out there and said, you know, they didn't want to touch it, so.
It's almost a legal thing between the neighbors and...
Yeah.
Well, it's not legal, because it's a county. I'm getting assessed on it, Jared.
I know.
I'm getting assessed on other people's ditches. I mean, if, and, and it's, you can't just go change the flow of water and then be brought to your attention and just push it under the table, and then I continue to get assessed on the other neighbor's property ditch that benefits them, that's on the other side of the highway.
When I think...
I, I'm not gonna beat it up or whatever it is, I just, I, it needs to be reassessed and looked at, and we can agree to disagree, and life's good, you know, I just...
Let's start with that, Mike, if we can, on the redetermination, get that copy to you so you can actually see how they got to it, okay? And maybe that'll help explain things, might not be the right answer, but at least you'll understand how the viewers came up with what they did for the...
And I paid more than I'm gonna, I paid more to farm my 80, or 34 acres than what the total ditch assessment is, because they changed the flow of water. Come on, let's make it fair, let's, let's do it, do it right. Fix it, it needs to be fixed.
We'll have Chris or Adam come out and...
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, go ahead.
Just because I think some of the things that Mike brought up were kind of over, um, look, he, he said there was a $35,000 assessment done on that ditch, that's because there was redetermination stuff that was already done on it. It's not that there was stuff done on the ditch necessarily. And then in order to actually change that, my understanding, being new at this, is that we would have to do a whole redetermination of that whole system, which then in turn would be assessed back to all the people on that system again.
Right, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I knew what I was talking about.
All right. Item two, consent agenda, approve the minutes.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to approve the ditch authority meeting minutes from November 4th. Is there any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Chris, Maywood Township discussion regarding the payment of CD nine and 14 repairs.
I think I'm going to let our drainage inspector, Adam, key off this, uh, this item.
Okay.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Pull up quick the agenda item. All right, can you guys see that all right?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so I won't be up here for long. Um, Maywood Township came to Chris regarding the CD nine and 14 repairs that were done, and they were asking for a payment plan, kind of like you guys gave the, the landowners. So here, they were charged $93,000 and 70, or $93,000 and $70 for both CD nine and 14, and that was mostly just culvert payments. So I believe Maywood Township is here today, and they would like to discuss with you regarding that. And here attached to is their cash flow, um, and they're just looking to work with you and discuss kind of a good payment plan for, for that, so I'll leave it to Maywood Township if they were here. Thank you.
Morning, Jim.
Jim Martinson, one of the supervisors for Maywood Township. Randy is here, is Gary? Oh, yeah, there isn't a... Gary Gundahl is also here, so it's Randy and, uh, Randy Iler and Gary. Quick snapshot of how we got into this situation, uh, in that last year, we received an estimate of about $80,000 for this project. This July, we received the first, what we thought was the first bill, that was, uh, 40, or $38,800 something, uh, and we paid that. We have paid that initial. What we weren't ready to handle, uh, is the, for the culverts, and now that bill has come in for 93. Back in March, we significantly updated our levy from 140,000 to 235,000, $95,000 increase to offset this upcoming expense. However, we won't see the benefit of that until, what, next July? So what we've done here is created a cash flow of, where are we? The cash flow that's up here does not have anything in it for the ditch, so we're gonna have to manage our, as you can see in the, uh, in the cash flow, uh, we got some decisions to make as we get to May, even without this 93,000. And so how we, as, as things get closer, we can, we can manage and get on top of that, perhaps, uh, we don't have the plan yet, but we'll have to do something to take care of those negatives for the two months that we go negative in our actual cash balance. So what we're looking for, uh, and if Gary and, uh, Randy want to comment, I don't want to take, um, you know, what we're looking for is what, what do we have, what, what are our options as far as making this payment?
Mr. Chair?
Monty, what kind of options do we have for that?
You know, this is a ditch legal question. I was thinking about that. I, I really don't want to guess on this. I, we're gonna need to consult with Kale and get you an answer. You know, is, is a township different than a private landowner? I don't know. So unless Chris already has answers.
Yeah, I think Christine and I, cause they, cause, you know, townships and other road authorities, even like the county highway department, we don't get an annual tax statement to pay taxes, so one concern from a staff standpoint is tracking that if we allow, if, if it is allowable, over a multi-year repayment plan. We certainly, and I think that's a great idea, check with our, our legal counsel on that. As you recall, landowners are charged, uh, an interest rate, too. That's why I think it's a, it's kind of a policy discussion that we need to have. It's not like it's county levy, well, it's not highway department money. Right now, the, the general levy is being asked to front these costs. So a couple of things here. I, I really don't believe Maywood's trying to shirk their responsibilities, that they came to me with kind of a plan, um, if that's legally allowed, and maybe that's the next step, is that we'll have to consult with our legal counsel on...
Yeah.
Kind of the mechanisms, and I think address that, that question about, uh, interest rates, since, since we're borrowing from the general fund, so the general fund's not losing interest earnings, maybe that's something that needs to be considered as well.
Quick question, Jim, Maywood's fund balance, do you have a fund balance?
No.
No fund balance at all?
This, this is our entire...
Everything's included here in your cash flow? Okay. My other question, Christine, so are townships, uh, do they get the assessment paperwork like landowners do, May and November? Is that when their payments are due? Or they just get invoiced?
They were just invoiced.
Okay.
That would have been the cost against the roads.
Yeah.
Yes, and once again, townships and the county highway department get an assessment for the benefit that the roads receive for their water drainage to it. So this is kind of like, think of it, this is like construction costs. The culverts were replaced under their roads as part of the ditch repair project. Statute is somewhat clear on that, that the road authority is responsible for replacing their crossings as part of a ditch project, so.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I, I, in a way, the townships are in no different situation than, than a landowner, really, because I'm not saying we can stretch it out that far, or we're even legally able to do that, but I can see where, depending on the time of the year, you may, you wouldn't have the ability to levy for any of that and, but have to come up with that money. And that, that's, that's a, that's a pretty big hardship, if you ask me.
So Jim, just so I'm understanding, the $38,000 that you paid was the benefit assessment? Is that right?
Chris, or, I, I'm not...
Wasn't towards construction?
Township roads that are within the watershed of CD nine or CD 14.
14.
Yeah, have a benefit assessment, just like a landowner would.
Right.
So...
So when the levy, preliminary levy was set, there wasn't consideration for that and/or the construct? There was for the construction, but that was 80,000, if I remember right.
That's correct.
So the invoice is coming in about 13 grand over what you had projected, plus the benefit was paid.
Yeah, now, just speaking personally, uh, what I was hoping we could do is actually in the next year, lower our levy, uh, because of, you know, we went from $95,000, it was a significant jump, uh, and that was approved. I was hoping we could lower it. I don't know how much we can lower it, uh, we may have to have it for another year. I haven't looked at and haven't presented to the board any... I haven't looked at and haven't presented to the board any, say, anything for nineteen twenty-seven, but or twen- nineteen twenty-seven. My age is showing. Uh, twenty twenty-seven.
Mister Chair. Yeah, go ahead.
So when we do the benefit of acres though, there was, you know, other townships that had the same thing, that they were assessed for the redetermination of benefits too, right? So we got to be really careful here that, you know, say the Graham Township comes and they had ditch six and seven in theirs. So they come and they want, you know, we weren't budgeted for that redetermination of benefits, you know, I think that's.
Part, I think part of what stands out here, it's a little bit different, is nine and fourteen were significant repairs. And they both said Maywood.
Correct.
But Mister Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah. But but I agree. We have to figure out legally what we can and can't do.
Yeah.
I mean, my opinion is we do what we ever can to help them.
Yeah. You know, I think we, what do we go, twenty or fifteen or twenty years?
Fifteen.
Fifteen years on the, I'm just saying, maybe, maybe to, if, one, we got to listen to the attorneys on this. But but if we're able to go out three years or something on a payback, it makes sense to work with it and and it's being paid for by everybody in the county or the people in that ditch area in that Maywood Township, so either way, it's.
And I can see, you know, not only are the landowners getting assessed, then their taxes to the township are being raised because they have to cover this cost too.
That's right.
Yeah.
Um, Jim, have you, the board looked at any private funding?
Randy, could you speak to that?
Yes, I did check with our local bank and townships are not allowed to take loan out.
How about Township Association?
I've not checked into that.
Okay. All right.
Otherwise, I mean, there there's a process if I could get bonded, but you're talking a lot of money upfront and we don't have that.
Yeah. Um, I see the invoice says due upon receipt, but obviously, we're going to have to get this figured out first. So maybe between Chris and myself and Monty, we can have a conversation with Kale and find out what our options are. And then we can communicate back to to Maywood. That be okay? We just want to make sure we get what we can legally do. Yeah, what our options are, I guess.
And Mister Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, and if you check with the uh Association of Townships, they might be able to come up with something that can help with this too. So while we're checking with the attorney, if you want to check with your Minnesota Association of Townships, they might have some answers too.
Somebody will be in touch sooner than later.
Well, okay, and if if you can, you know, define what what we can do, then we can put it in the plan.
Right.
See what we need.
Because we'll ask Kale for what our options are. If we have options with an S or not, I don't know.
Mister Chair.
Yeah.
So you you should check further into this borrowing part because um Langola borrowed like nine hundred thousand dollars to um resurface roads. And they didn't do a bonding. They just borrowed it from the bank.
And I do know Granite Ledge borrowed money to build, move their town hall.
I did get told it is not legal for a bank to give a township a loan. Some banks will. They kind of look.
Look the other way?
We don't know nothing about that.
Yeah, right.
All right, we'll have a conversation with our ditch attorney and get back to you.
Mister Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Jim, uh, I want to, we forgot a few thank yous earlier, but thank you for your help on the broadband committee. And Christine, thank you for your help on the broad, there was probably five others. I, somebody from Lang- or.
Greg Bristol.
Greg Bristol, yep. So we appreciate it.
It's good to see the orange sticks.
That's right.
Thank you, Jim, Randy and Gary. We'll, we'll get back to you soon as we can. Anything else, Chris?
No, I believe that's the direction for staff, is to contact our attorney on this issue and set up a meeting.
Yep, one question I have is, do we have any updates at all on if we're looking at some potential maintenance quotes for nine and fourteen?
Uh, we don't have anything, we don't have any quotes yet. No.
That in the works?
Uh, it can be, yeah.
I think it should be.
To do mowing or?
Well, I guess I would leave a little bit of that suggestion up to Adam. I know that he's done some flying there and see, I think there was some sluffage on nine. Um, and probably some mowing needed already.
Okay.
So I, I mean, maybe he can determine what potentially would need to be done.
Recently sent out letters to um nine and fourteen regarding that I'm going to do another inspection. So that's either this week or before Thanksgiving, I'm going to do another inspection. And then Chris and I can obviously discuss based on the video. Because obviously, it's been a whole summer, maybe some more foliage grew and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, so I guess I'm interested to see what that shows and come back and say, hey, here's what we think we should get quoted.
Sure.
For not falling behind. We've had a pretty good fall to be doing some stuff potentially, so. Okay.
Chris, I'm just going to give you some more bad news. Ditch ten.
Yeah.
The beavers are starting to build their dam again.
Yeah, so.
So you know that.
In the last week on that one, yeah, our trapper has trapped six, six beaver. So but that was last week. At the end of last week, there were six, um, nor the week before. So we had hunting in there. So this week, we are, this morning's weekly meeting with management team, we're supposed to, um, instruction was given to my maintenance superintendent to check in with our trapper, see if he's trapped anymore. If it's no more in his traps, we're going to remove that that beaver dam that got rebuilt.
Small, yeah, if it's just small right now. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I drive past there every day to see that, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you have something?
Yes, um, Mister Chair. I just, I I keep thinking about what, I don't want to keep beating a horse, but what Mister Depp had brought up about somebody draining their water into their property. That, that is horrible. I mean, and nobody can do anything about it.
We went, I mean, we went round with soil and water. It wasn't part of ditch authority. County Board has no regulations on private ditch.
It just, it behooves me how something like that can happen and and nobody can take responsibility of it and and fix or or rectify the situation.
I was actually out in the field.
So you verified this too? All right, that's all.
All right, anything else? Chris, anything else?
I have nothing.
Adam, anything? All right. We're adjourned at ten thirty-five. Turn it back to the board chair.
So we'll quickly finish up here before we do the pu- uh committee of the whole. Um, Commissioner meeting updates, if you got something that's, you think needs to be brought before the board, let us know. Nothing.
Typical meetings.
Yes.
I do with the APO. Um, we talked about uh um the federal um lobbying and it, we're going to be, Monty, did you get that email from um the APO yet?
Not that I recall, no.
With all administrators, instead of everybody having a lobbyist individually pooling money, we're going to get way more of a benefit. And with with the County Road One stuff coming, I I, that's right.
Are they going with RFPs or are they just going to choose somebody or?
I, it, well, Larkin Hoffman had put in a number and and I know that uh there there's, right now, we work with David Church, and I'm not saying we're going away from there, but but we got to look at options. Right now, if people are paying thirty thousand dollars a year or fifty thousand dollars a year, you pool all that money. And now you have one and one working. It's, it's a significant uh situation.
Somebody that's working more for us.
Oh.
Definitely.
Yeah. So anyway, that that will be coming up and we're going to try and figure out what we're going to do by, I think, the first meeting in January.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have any commi- Commissioner comments? Monty, Committee of the Holes?
Yes, sir. All right. Uh, to your descent, your existing December third Committee of the Whole, that's the one on budget and elected official salaries. Chris and I would like to discuss with you uh an interim, a recommendation on an interim county engineer. I think that was what we agreed to. So add that to the December third topics Committee of the Whole. I think that starts at eight thirty. Yeah. So we'll have a lot on that agenda. Um, I'd like to propose to you a meeting, we've talked about, you know, our selection of an FFE vendor. Between Evan and I, we'd like to suggest you do meeting with two FFE vendors after your board meeting on the sixteenth. Would that work? To meet after the board meeting on the sixteenth with two FFE vendors. Yes?
It works here, I don't know.
Okay. Because Evan and I are going to be, and we're going to be screening that down from from four, I think, five to two on December, I forget, the fifth or something like that, you know. So December sixteenth, meeting FFE vendors. I have two more, just more, let's see here, what do we got here? As you may know, MNDOT is conducting a number of public meetings on its Highway ten study. And uh I probably will just give you a copy of this, but there's uh public meetings, December third in Royalton, December fourth at Watab Town Hall, and December fourth at Copper Kitchen in East St. Cloud. Um, they're inviting the public to attend and give input on their current uh just Highway ten corridor study. So uh we'll give you these times. Uh, I think we'll just give you a copy of this, in case you're available to attend. I know some of this, see, AMC is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday that week, right?
Next week. No, the next, the following week.
Oh, it's the following week, excuse me. Okay. So that actually might work then. So Wednesday, December third, Royalton Town Hall, two to six. Thursday, December fourth, seven to nine AM, Watab Town Hall. Thursday, December fourth, three to six PM, thankfully, Copper Kitchen.
So could we set them that we could attend so we don't run into a situation?
Set them both.
Yeah, well, yeah, I suggest we set these as cows, you know, and if you all can attend, that's great, you know. It sounds like atten- attendance at these has been substantial, what I understand.
And they've had it out in the local papers.
Yeah, yeah.
They've notified townships.
They're very early in the planning and discussions about possible solutions to, you know, various issues on that quarter, you know, safety, congestion and so on. It sounds like the Royalton stopside, uh stoplight is a big topic of conversation.
Well, I I've been, I've been going through there and they are doing like survey beyond belief up there right now. I mean, I don't know what they're doing, but.
Right. And I think the East Saint Germain intersection in Highway ten is also a significant area of concern. Pedestrian safety and congestion and so on. Yep, yep. And, you know, of course, all the crossovers in Benton County were, those are scary, right? Yeah, very dangerous. Okay. Lastly, Benton Economic Partnership invites you to take a tour of uh the um, okay, I'm trying to wade through a an email, a long email string here. It's, it's the facility uh S C I P I. Isn't that like the the monument, the new monument business that is in the former brewery, the St. Cloud Airport Industrial Park, right? Um, this is kind of what, far, far, far out there, February third, uh, to take a tour of that facility. I think they're, they're, they're flexible, I'm sorry. They're flexible, I'm sorry, one o'clock here, one o'clock on February third.
Board meeting day, but okay.
One o'clock on February third. Does that work? Go ahead and put it on the, on the list, okay? Yeah, yeah. Again, you're invited by the BEP to tour that facility. And we'll, we'll put the address in the Committee of the Whole listing.
That it?
And that is it, sir.
Move for approval of the call, Mister Chair.
Second. Most men made second and approve the call upcoming weeks. All in favor? Reset the county board at ten forty-one. We'll take a quick break here and then we'll be right.
Okay, we'll shut off. We're going to get the, we're going to set the room in the.